Actually, it's assessors meeting.
I mean Jim.
He's with Dan.
And I think he's standing out there.
We're gonna go ahead because we have a long meeting.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I didn't do it.
Jim, we're beginning.
I got him, I found him. He's here.
Okay.
Relax.
So, we're going right into opening an assessors meeting now. Which always comes before.
I am sorry guys.
That's okay. You're on, final review of open space application Redpoint Park.
We moved.
Yes.
There you go. So, I'm doing, I carefully documented and assessed this parcel under the rules of the open space classification standards for the state of Maine. And as it turns out, the original assessment for this parcel was $322,386. The new assessment under the 20% ordinary open space classification, which means that those lands they marked, earmarked to be placed into open space, was 45 acres. And that's rear acres. And so, it's not, you know, rear acreage. At that level goes for about 800 bucks an acre. Has rear acreage anyway. So, it's not a whole lot. But, that said, the new assessment is $275,052. So, the difference is, in assessment is $47,334, which works out to be a reduction in taxes as a result of putting this park in open space of $1,122.19. Now, there is a building to be built there. And when it's completed, I estimate that it will assess for about $100,000. Which by April 1 of next year, when it's done, we'll move this assessment back up to 300, roughly 375,000.
More than it was before.
More than 322.
It's around 87.
So, the net result here is, you know, he paid, that parcel was paying $7,688.90 in taxes for this year. For this coming year, it will pay 6,500, assume the mill lake stays the same. It will pay $6,559.99. And that's a difference of 1,000, some, you know, 100 some dollars.
But we gained back after the assessment.
So, the impact, the impact here, it's not as great as I feared it might be. And that's because of the way they configured this park. The way they configured the park, divided it up in terms of, you know, open space area versus regular land. And of course, it has, this parcel has a lot of shore frontage. And so, I had to account, most of the, most of this reduction had to do with taking 20% off of the shore frontage portion of it.
And it could go actually up to 90, but in this case, you did 20.
Well, they asked for ordinary open space.
So, that's, that's good.
Anybody can put their land into ordinary open space, you know.
Then that's a standard deduction, 20%?
Yeah, 20% ordinary open space. They didn't do forever wild and all that stuff, you know, so.
So, that's not bad.
And keep in mind, if, if the town were to have taken land and built this park, it would be completely off capital. All right? Any questions?
Good job.
That's, that sounds good.
It didn't work out as dire as we thought it might.
Well, but taking one, one lot at a time, so that's.
And that's why I kept telling folks, they'd come and ask me, and I would go, "Look, I need to sit down and analyze it. This is not a trivial mathematical problem." Card land up into different classifications.
Back here, taking a ton of people.
Good, okay.
So, we have an abatement that we have to sign? That goes to this?
No, that, that was a mistake some, I didn't make it.
You need to ask that, you don't have to sign anything.
No.
Okay, so this is just your findings that you were sending in a letter, sorry?
Yeah.
Thank you sir, I'm sorry to delay you from your performance here.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
No, it's good, very good.
So, without.
I'm not happy, but I, I'll get.
I'll be a little more relaxed.
Without further discussion, we will close the assessors meeting and reopen the board meeting.
Show me the brochure.
Good night, have a good time.
Good night, you too.
Safe drive home.
Safe drive.
So, we need a motion to sign the warrants.
So, move.
Second.
All favor.
You don't behave yourself like that.
Sit with that.
No.
No ice cream to eat.
That's right. We're gonna have to go with a timeout. Okay, thank you so much. We need a motion to approve the minutes of July 1 meeting as written.
Eleven?
It says one, July 1. July 11. Sorry, July 11, as written.
I, I, so move.
Second. All in favor? There we go. We need a motion to sign the deed for tax acquired property. There's the two of them, and they both paid in full. Do we have that motion?
I would move that we sign the tax acquired property.
And just for the record, it's map 9, lot 4, section 1, map 9, lot 2, section 3. All in favor?
Before you ask, I'll second.
Do you want me to give a second? Oh, you have to sign the name exactly the way it's typed underneath there.
Oh, we need a witness that this.
It's not acceptable.
Would everybody, Troy, did you witness this signature?
You got a gun on you?
You can use that pen in reference rates or what you want.
We have to, well, we have to wait till everybody's signed. Tony's done. Tony's done. Okay, new business. We have a liquor license application for Downey Strangefly Bar and Grill. Yay, a new place to go.
Is anyone wearing a prose?
I think it's going to be at the old Cruces. You're going to be a restaurant lounge, that's your classification?
Yes.
And what's your, what's the capacity there, do you know?
I saw the old one with 95, like the whole 95 people, 45.
Well, I know from speaking with the whole board, we wish you well and we hope you're successful. I, I don't imagine there is any objection, any objections to this liquor license being applied before in town?
Yeah.
Seeing no objections, I ask for a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor? So, you'll have to pick it up in the morning, because they have to do some notary stuff.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Wait, this is what you signed?
Oh, now this is. Yes.
Joanne, make the motion.
Thanks, Troy.
Okay, this is.
Thank you, sir Troy.
Nice guy, isn't it? All right, now we do have an abatement.
Incident.
So, we need a motion to sign a sewer abatement, do we know why?
Yes, this property was combined and it no longer should get a.
Well, they're combined, correct. So, the abatement is for $168.30. Do you have a motion? All in favor? Who made the motion, Joanne?
Sewer truck.
You were named.
Me. I was approached by the sewer department. There's pictures in your packet, my pretty colored pictures, from before and after. They had taken it out to the local service garage to get an inspection sticker, and they were told a lot of work needed to be done before that was gonna happen. The entire underneath of dressed it out. And it looked pretty grim, the future of this 2007 Chevy pickup truck. So, good thinking, and I conversed with our public works foreman. They're a very talented group of men out there that are mechanics and welders. And they stripped this truck.
Wow.
And have made it practically new.
Amazing, it looks really good.
They, they sandblasted, they blasted the frame, they painted everything, they replaced the frame line, look at the ball joints, everything that needed to be done, it was done in-house within our, all we had to do was buy 700 parts. So, I'm so proud of them and grateful that our departments are working together, so.
Yeah.
Can I bring one other?
Line up.
If I donate my 2007 Hyundai to the town, can they fix it?
They did the bodywork on the, on the door, the rocker panel was rusting out. They did the bondo and painted, and then they did preventative maintenance. They put a strip along the bondo.
Oh, they.
So, it should last at least another 10 years.
Right. Is this the truck that was parked along Water Street for, what, part of the summer?
No. This is the sewer truck that also serves as the recycling pickup for the cardboard. So, it serves a dual purpose.
Okay, so what about your, okay, so then, then next, so what were we supposed to, was this informational?
That's informational. That's a good, no, we're gonna have some good information here.
Washington County, Renee, I'm not sure she wants to sit on the Washington County Budget Committee, but she has offered to sit on the Washington County Budget Committee, and we would like her to.
Oh, that's so exciting, Renee.
I mean, make a motion. Make a motion, she sits on the budget committee. We have a second?
And she wants to, it's a lot of, she wants to.
Yes, but I'm, I learned last year, 'cause I, I filled in for who I replaced. And so, now I'm coming to the board with updates of what I'm learning, and going in with a vote that you have determined, not me.
Good luck to you.
So, make a motion where you put her on the budget committee.
I totally agree, I move that we put her on the budget.
All in favor?
Dan, you second?
Well, she made the motion, she'll second.
Every once in a while. Now, Tony, you need to close your ears. We have a letter of.
Close your ears, turn your eyes, move around so we can.
A letter of appreciation.
Yes.
So, there's a letter of appreciation here to Tony. Anthony Canone, the Town of Quebec expresses its gratitude for your many years of service and dedication as a selectman, years of self-sacrifice, countless hours spent in meetings representing the people of Quebec, and at times making difficult decisions. We thank you for going above and beyond with your participation on the harbor board and various committees. Tony, your wisdom and generosity will be missed. You'll always be someone to turn to for advice, and most importantly, our friend. We wish you the best and hope to work with you in the future. On behalf of the Town of Quebec, please accept our heartfelt appreciation. Sincerely, and you can't sign this one.
I didn't even think of space.
I wouldn't dare.
Especially your knowledge of rocks. I mean, ever that first meeting, you knew about that gravel.
The sign.
So, make a motion that we sign this. Second motion, we sign. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so, oh, where's the original?
Sign it.
Not an easy job.
No, and I expect a pizza party or something when I get down there.
All right, you all heard that, pizza for Joanne.
I'll donate the ice cream.
Excellent.
Wrap the balls on the grill.
Oh, good.
I heard that, donated ice cream. Okay.
I don't know much about this.
Oh, I can say that, not the straight thing.
No, MMA, right?
Oh, MMA voting ballot, I don't know anything about that either.
We received a voting ballot from the main municipal association. This is for the municipal officers to sign off on. You've got your proposed, wow, there's only one choice, so it's really not, you don't have to think about it. You just vote, 'cause there's no contest going. But this is for the MMA committees. You're, you're voting for a vice president for one year, and an executive committee member, three of them. So, this is just formal, that we're invited to participate, it's up to you to do that.
How about we give it to Tony?
Make a motion to vote for them.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so, so I'll second that. All in favor? So, you just have to, I guess we just have to vote for one, and only one, vote for three, there's only three.
Yep.
You have to print your name and then sign it.
You're, you're sending this around, correct, yes.
I'm giving this. Current number of municipal officers, five. Okay, see that, is that all the same thing there? Keep it all together then.
Here's a paper clip here.
There's a paper clip. Okay, yes. So, it came to our attention that there were giant granite rocks kind of collapsing over between H and D's and the commercial pier. And the road is washing out. So, we had a contractor look at it, we had a retired engineer look at it, and we had another contractor look at it to give us advice. The conclusion, and public works, the conclusion was the job would be able to be completed by public works. So, it's not gonna have to go out to bed. They're gonna need to put some more gravel and rock in, and raise, and some rig wrap, and raise the rocks so that they don't end up at the bottom of the hill. And they're doing both, but they're doing one. The worst part is between H and D's and, and the commercial pier. So, if you drive by, you see that it's falling like.
While you're on the street past the marina office, the upside ledge is collapsing and filling the ditch with gravel. And there's a significant amount there, and it looks like it's.
How far up they go?
It's before the Victor Street houses on the, on the top, and down to where they're parking on the other side of the road from the marina office. And if you take a look at that, there's a lot of.
Past that tree that's there?
I guess.
Up, up.
Yeah, so, you can't.
Some of the ledge, are you saying, yeah, the ledge is collapsing?
Is that where the house, the house is sitting on?
No.
Okay, well, it's beside the road. Well, we'll have to get them to look at that as well, thank you.
It's entirely possible they gotta pull this, like, a percent of that ledge on the other side.
So, while, uh-oh. I'm just gonna tell you what subjects we're all here for. Wildlife issue in the village. We have something we're gonna read. We have all kinds of rodents, and raccoons, and skunks in our village. And we've had multiple complaints from the taxpayer that we need, we need, the community to be involved to make it, to make it work. Just two or three people cannot eradicate the issue. And you want, you wanna, you wanna read it for me?
Yep. This is from June 19th, the Quebec help officer, Marlene Deal Patrick. When we first started getting these complaints, I asked Marlene to investigate, and each complainant was contacted, and this was her report back. I have followed up with the citizens that have filed complaints on the growing numbers of rats in the Town of Quebec. It appears that some have greater amounts of rats than others. I did advise them that it is a community effort to keep them under control. And as a community, we need to work together to accomplish this. I did advise them that as homeowners, they do not, they do need to take extra precaution keeping their property clean, and not to leave any pet food and water out. I have printed out a page of things that the community can do, side note, I provided that up on sidebar there, if anybody wants one. To help eliminate attracting them. Maybe we should post it on the Quebec channel to make citizens aware of the existing problem, and how to get it under control. Not sure what else we can do. I did let the people know that we are taking this seriously, and are working on a solution to get this resolved. I would greatly appreciate any suggestions you may have. Sincerely, Marlene Deal Patrick. So, today, the complaints are still coming in. I contacted at least three pest solutions, they're all in the Bangor area. One called back and met with me today for about three hours. We went door to door investigating the issue. It is legitimate issue. They appear to be living in the quote unquote bamboo. It's truly Japanese knotweed, but locals call it bamboo. And they seem to have gathered their, you can see their, the holes. So, there are people that are doing a lot to help, trying to eradicate this issue. They are trapping, setting traps in the backyard, making sure pet food comes in at least at night. In the backyard in the day, 'cause these are nocturnal animals. It's not only gonna attract rats, you're also gonna get raccoons, skunks, any kind of little critter looking for food. We talked about garbage earlier. Having garbage piling up in a building or a garage, and then cleaning out a month later is not helping the issue. We plead take, you know, get rid of your garbage as soon as you can. Put it in metal cans, they can chew through the plastic, and that's what we're hearing with the testimonies today that I listened to. They chew right through plastic.
And you need to put a bunch of quarter parts in there.
Yes.
Tighten, especially with the. Oh, and I'll say, abandoned buildings.
And the abandoned buildings.
We have so many, it's all updated in abandoned buildings, and we had two of which collapsed in the last four months.
Our code enforcement officer has written letters to these owners, and we are seeing some response, so that's hopeful.
There is one particular abandoned building, I think you all know it, it looks the haunted building that's going up the hill.
Pleasant school.
On the corner, yeah. And it is, it is the home of many raccoons and skunks, at least I know. I mean, in broad daylight, you can drive by, it's like the raccoon hotel.
I contacted a trapper, Larry Sprague. If anybody individually wants help, additional help on their property, I have his number. He will come per fee, probably per animal that he captures. For the town, this is my job, is in gathering information, presenting it to the board. If you want the town to hire him, he will only charge us gas. He's giving the town a break. Individuals, he, there'll be more, 'cause he makes a living at it. But, I will say this, not to scare you, but just to bring some light on this. Eastport did have a confirmed case of rabies in Araco. We have not seen any of that here in Quebec, thank goodness. But, just throwing that out there in your decision.
Seen out in the day, that's a good.
That's the problem.
Oh, they bring up.
Seen out in the day, then there.
So, so, back to the bamboo, Japanese knotweed.
And abandoned buildings.
And abandoned buildings, yep. One thing that the town can do, that's what everybody's wanting to, wanting to know, what is the town going to do to help this problem? So, thinking outside of the box, if they're living in the bamboo, it's hard for people to cut the bamboo, get the roots out, and then take it away to probably, if they're in their ease. Right. I asked foreman, public works foreman Ricky Bradley, what he thought about letting our cemetery mowing crew become involved in dealing with this, this one time, since it's such an issue. And he agreed that that is a service that we can offer. If the select board authorizes it to help individuals right now get rid of the knotweed in their backyard, where they're living.
In the town, my.
So, if you're lucky and you're getting rid of all this bamboo, where are they gonna go?
Well, that's what happened when the abandoned building collapsed. This only showed up four months ago. People have to set traps.
Because there's also food in this equation.
Yes.
So, I've always had issues with people who feed dog food and peanuts to birds, and they don't, they don't do very good about cleaning up what hits the ground. And I think that's a source of food for rats.
Absolutely.
The other thing, are, are the restaurant stems, town have to be very particularly wary of where they're putting their food waste.
Yeah, but they got, they're, all their dumpsters are littered and blocked, and I don't think a rat could get in there.
Well.
I don't think.
We didn't see, in the investigation today, nobody, nobody on Water Street had seen any signs of it. Nobody on Water Street.
The, the list of the dumpsters are plastic, and rats will do, rats can put all, well, food to them. I've seen them, when I go for bolters and big holes to, to check the road, I dump that.
It's really not an easy problem to solve. And every single person has to, even if you don't have a problem, you need to help, because maybe your neighbor has the problem.
Maybe your neighbor has a problem.
The professional that I spoke to today, he said, if you continue to trap, that's what's gonna get them. Unfortunately, you've gotta kill them. And when you think you've got them all, and you're not getting any more in your traps, you have to continue setting a trap. It's an ongoing thing, and everybody's gotta do it.
This is the worst time for rats, during the summertime.
And the other thing is, we don't have any cats anymore. I mean, we've saved the cats, but the.
Oh, don't be too quick, I have two cats that average five months.
Your cats are retired.
Some towns literally use cats as natural way of, of coming down the population.
And it's a good plug for SOS.
And some dogs.
The guy from Hamlin, the guy from Hamlin isn't available.
Pied Piper, no, he's retired too.
And we did remove the feral cat last week, and the lady.
And then we did have the peacock cannery collapse.
A lot of the complaints are increased mice, not only rats, but some of the complaints are increased mice.
We have locals that are with their autumn life, they never had a problem until this, four months ago.
I've not seen it from this house, but the green house that is on Washington Street there, couple doors down from me, that nobody's living there anymore. They said it has.
That's on the radar for the.
Garbage in the basement.
There was a foreclosure, and the bank.
And people on both sides are complaining about the rats, so.
That, yeah, that's.
We agree, we found that out in our investigation today.
Another source.
And the code enforcement has been in touch with the bank, but now owns that.
Okay.
They're looking into it, but due to the alleged trash in it, I've also asked our help officer to look into it. So, maybe we can get in there, but.
Barbara.
Thank you. I wanted to say that I put in the complaint, because I had a lot more mice this winter, and after the warehouse, and the peacock building, et cetera. And I constantly maintain traps. I use rat seper, because it just electrocutes, and I think it's the most humane. But I have it throughout the house. And I had more batteries I had to use, because clearly they were coming in, and I had more dead mice. And we do everything that we can over on Main Street, in our block, to maintain. And it has been in this, these last few months. I really appreciate that Marlene called right away in response to the complaint, and was very good about, I felt, listening to and documenting my concerns. And she went over the list of things, and we were doing that. And I really value that Renee came out with a qualified professional. And I, I suggested with these foreclosures, you have to be more aggressive with the banks. And they, they do have a legal liability and responsibility. You can't, you know, otherwise get to the legal department. But, this, the blight situation of buildings collapsing, I'm glad Gary Edwards has been appointed. But that's where we've got to attack the problem. And people on limited incomes just simply can't hate it, take all these vermin away. So, I, I implore you that the town has to put something in the budget for these kinds of situations.
I would have you prepare yourself for the fall. Mice tend to come inside in the fall, and so, be prepared.
Yeah, I did not have that problem in the fall, but of course, we didn't have the buildings and collapsing and the garbage building over on La Jolla.
It seems to be totally timed.
After January for me, when I had my knee surgery and came back. We, I had so much of an issue. Thank you.
This house on North Quebec Road, it's, I don't know what's keeping it out. The court was pulling one more off, and the raccoons are living in it. And it's entertainment for Cheryl. She watches them coming out.
You don't mind, I'll let you read the argument for that one. This is the road control suggestions from the help officer.
I think we should have it available for everyone.
Yeah, it's available.
And I don't think we need to read it.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion that we let the cemetery crew not only cut down the bamboo, but they're gonna have to do, do something to have it not come back.
Well, good luck with that.
The roots go down nine feet. In England, they put sea water on it.
Yes.
So, I checked the other day, because of my bamboo outback, and 5% saline to a gallon is prob, is what saltwater is. So, if somebody could put that on the bamboo.
After it's been cut down.
After it's been dug down as far as they can get it, put the saltwater on, then I'm gonna put cardboard down and black, plastic on top, and then, and put, you know, soil on top of that. But, you do have to have that saltwater on it, and it's not gonna do anywhere.
Okay, well, that's a good suggestion. So, we do have, we could take some money out of the dangerous building. But it's since we believe that the whole rodent population seems to have skywashed the minute the buildings, we took, the buildings were taken down. So, I think it's related. I think the rodent problem is related to the abandoned buildings.
The professional agreed with this.
And he, he agreed that that was the source.
Well, it sounds like it's mostly, mostly fascinated approach of tearing down, trapping, and the garbage control, they all are the same.
No, buildings, buildings should not be torn down without eradication first.
Yeah.
There needs to be something where they are, they are taken. It's not after the fact, because they spread and scurried everywhere. They really need to be contained within the, like that, the one that we used to call the cat house is not the raccoon pad.
Yes, yes, it is.
So you have a motion on the floor.
So I need a second.
I second.
All in favor?
What about trapping?
No, there's a no. Were you in favor? If they're getting it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
I'm not.
No.
All right. Shouldn't cross that much, anyway, I'd say.
One no. Now, what about the trapping? That's a separate issue, trapping, hiring for raccoons.
I make a motion that we go forward with the trapping of them, and by hiring somebody to perform that.
And that would be put in our, like, for the cat building, plus in a school, we own the monument, so it would, they would have to be on our property, right?
Do that, or getting permission from the landowner.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but some.
And then we own Flatiron Corner, and then we own the little park over there across from the library.
So the closest to the hotspot would be the monument, I would say.
Because there's, now, this trapping is going to be for raccoons, right?
But he's cooking skunks, but he'll take care of that, he does.
Yeah.
So motion made by Tony.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Is there for a time period?
You're not in favor.
Just until we get most of them?
As you said, this is a long-term procedure, and it has to be maintained. So it can't be, you can't say thirty days or forty-five days, it has to be until it's felt that there's a need to add it.
Well, it's not going to be much of a win anyway. They don't come out in the winter, do they?
Yeah.
Who, raccoons?
Oh, yeah.
Not that raccoons, rats, they're twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
And we, we only do it in the winter.
Well, I think that if, there's even a possible inkling that the raccoons may have rabies that we really need to
I think that's the great issue, yeah.
Take care of that. It's a public, that's a public issue, it's not an individual issue, when it's public health.
Rhonda.
If it's, if it's rabies that we're concerned about.
Yes.
Putting bait out to vaccinate the wild animals that live here might be a more humane solution.
And throw a little birth control in there, too.
Oh, he is live trapping the raccoons anyway.
Oh, and setting them free somewhere else.
He's, he's.
Live trapping.
Relocating them?
Relocates, yes.
But I think we'll have raccoons that will move in. I don't think this is going to, I kind of agree with Joey, and I don't think it's going to eliminate the problem.
It's going to work together with.
And if rabies is what we're really concerned about. Baiting, putting out bait that contains rabies would protect animals from getting, protect us from getting rabies.
No, I thought he would bait in the traps, and then he moves them away, and he, and he cures them at the same time.
Right, but I think other raccoons will move back in, we're not, we're not an isolated thing.
As long as we have empty buildings, as long as we have food around.
The tree enough.
They're going to be here, they've been here for thirty-five years, they're going to be here for thirty-five years.
I did send Carol an email the other day, because I'd seen this on Facebook, and I thought, this might be, solve our rat problem, that they are now collecting rats from Africa and training them to sniff out bombs.
They're called the rat patrol.
This could be the solution to our problem. They sent them to Afghanistan.
I think it was specifically land mines.
Land mines, yes.
Yes, and one more thing we can do is we can do a mailing to the sewer people to, of how to take care of the rodent control.
And we can also address like a building. Do you want to do both?
Well, yes.
Isn't one mailing, yeah.
Yes, I think everyone who lives in the town proper.
The sewer district.
And the sewer district, yes.
That'll be a good database.
So we need a motion to send that mailing out?
I, I make a motion that we send an informative mailing out to inform them of the
Right.
Rodent control.
Second. All in favor?
Second, me.
Tony. You in favor of that, Joe, I am?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Can I please explain myself on this a little bit?
Yes, you're very good.
For thirty-four years, I've had housing at South Quebec Corner, water view and sunrise apartments. For thirty-four years, we've had to do our own rodent control, and believe me, we do it every day faithfully, and we still get them. And I mean, these are babies compared to what we catch. And why, we live on the ocean. Rats, wolf rats, they're called, live on the ocean. And we've had them forever, and, I mean, you know, it's, to me, I've always had to do it myself, and that's why, that's why I feel the way I do.
They're Norwegian rats.
Norwegian rats.
These ones are South Quebec rats. No, I'm not, I can't hear, the cats, the cats are looking, they're turning around and running.
Yes, no, that's why dogs are bigger, but they originally came over on ships from Norway, yeah.
All right, well, on that lighter note, do we have any other, anybody who want to speak on this subject before we go to the next one?
I just have one thing to say, two people told me that they've seen, I've not seen a skunk walking down Hunter Avenue, so you might want to.
I have a skunk in the backyard, and it doesn't bother me, it doesn't, you know, it's, skunks.
They've been here a long time.
They've been there a long time, they don't, and they actually get along with my cats, believe it or not, you know? They, good evening, evening, they walk past you, they don't worry. Raccoons, I think, are very dangerous.
But if there's skunks, they're raging, they figure that.
Of course.
Skunks will kill rabies as quick as a raccoon will.
Yeah.
And every month, when the tide comes up a little bit higher, the rats will move from the beach into the community.
Yeah, yeah. Is this the next one, Water Street, I'll park this spot.
Yeah, I, I have a kid, a skunk like that.
So what is this?
It's a dragon, it's a cat, you know?
They, they, they.
A worm.
It's one thing, one thing, a wild, totally.
People have candy.
I'll tell you, one of the worst things is the dog food outside.
Yes.
Bird food, we had to stop everybody from doing, feeding the bird. Everybody loved to feed the birds, they loved to see them come, they loved to watch them, can't, they can't do it.
So there is this informative handout that people willing need to buy by if we're going to get rid of the problem. Yep. So on another note, we have a questionnaire from the DOT that we have to answer, seeing as we own, or we lease Flatiron Corner, all the people that abut the new sidewalk project needed to answer these questions, I believe. But this one is, is the recreational area public property is defined by section four F? No, I don't know, is it four F? I don't know. Well, I think we, you know what, I think we should do, I make a motion that Renee is authorized to answer this, these questions when she finds out what the correct answers are. Second. All in favor? There you go.
I voted no.
Oh, I'll cut it out, Danny.
Making me look.
Truly, truly for the record?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Yes.
You didn't want her to have to do it?
Well, I just didn't want to dump it on her, but she's smiling, and she can't vote to do it.
We don't know the answer, we can't answer this, because we don't know what section four F is.
Why don't you ask them what four F is, don't have her.
Here, what's four F? But I'll take care of this, I'll take it.
Water Street, no parking spot.
Okay, Gail is here for that.
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience, Gail. The beer is on hold, right?
I printed this document for them, just to have something, if you didn't bring it.
Yeah, no, that's a nice aerial view.
This is an explanation, Renee asked to help, it's, sorry for the wordiness, but hopefully.
It's a nice aerial, aerial view.
So, what we did, yeah, I guess this picture is actually better, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So there's a picture on the bottom, a drawing there, this is walking out the door of the brewery. Last year, we asked at the handicap parking place, which used to be right here, so if you walked out the door, the handicap parking spot, again, looking to the right. We asked to have it moved directly in front of the door, and the logic was that we have a ramp, and the customers that would need accessibility, we just take out the ramp and wheel it in. We did that several times, it worked fine. We've had, this winter, we, more investment, we put in a handicap accessible bathroom. We got a couple different architects come in here to help us get everything, you know, it's not ADA compliant, but it's ADA accessible. We did, we got aisle waves and all this stuff, got the bathroom set up. I got the ramp, so it's a nineteen inch rise, so the ramp has to be eleven feet long so that people can, that power up. We did a lot of research on it, and we thought that we could put a ramp and come in sideways, but there's not enough turning radius on the sidewalk for them to come up, so the ramp has to go out in the street. Here lies the problem, with the space in front of the door like this, when somebody, and we'd ask them to call us, somebody who's not, or who's mobile, will come in and say, hey, we've got somebody, so they can pull up, we get the ramp out, they come in, and then they park their vehicle. We've had several situations come up where people have actually parked there, and it's worked, some of them are ambulatory, some of them actually have the handicap parking spot, but we can't get the ramp out. So if somebody comes in, I mean, literally, and we've got a couple instances here where, fortunately, Frankie T was there one day, and he does this quite a bit at the Veterans Home, so he's like, come on, let's go out there and do it, so he and I go out there and take up the person and bring him in. It's not that big of a deal, except it is, you know, draws attention, and we use that music and stuff. So what we're asking is that, so, so then before the marathon, they redid the line, and so now what we've got is this third picture here, and it's not on Google Maps right now, but actually, both spots, the previous parking, the one that was designated as handicap, and the one that we asked for are both handicapped.
Both.
And if you look, the one that was, the one in front of the door was actually painted, the stencil was flipped over, and so now you can't even tell what it is.
Yeah.
But it's, so it's really, it's interesting, but anyways, what we're asking is coming out the door to make that a no parking zone, and keep the handicap off as you're looking at it to the right, so that we can get the ramp out there regularly, instead of having somebody, you know, having this parking.
What if somebody who was handicapped parking, a handicap parking, but they're not going to your place?
No problem.
That'll still work?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Because you'll have the no parking.
Exactly.
So that they can pull up in their car, get out, and then the person with them hopefully can move the car somewhere else.
Yes, and we, yeah, we don't want this to be exclusive, but we just can't get the ramp because it's got to be a liquid ramp to get that ride.
You went to a lot of trouble to get the ramp, and now you can't use it, so.
And the bathroom, and all this stuff.
So this is the final drawing.
That's where it's mine, yes.
So there'll be, there'll be.
And they'll print it, no parking.
Two.
That's what we.
Handicap lines.
Parking, and then there's another handicap right around here.
Yes, exactly, right there is handicapping, so they can come up this ramp, or they can come into the street, and come up, that's what we're asking.
Now, how, may I ask a question? Because I'm the one that's going to get the calls when somebody parks it. We have no local police department.
Yeah.
Where in most small towns that do, that's who deals with these issues. I know state police isn't going to come to Quebec because somebody parked in a no parking spot, or so.
But you could.
How far do we, do you want me to go?
Put cones on.
I think you could always have them towed, you know, if you could make an arrangement with like Randy.
Well, my thought would be, and I just heard somebody put cones down, is that if it's no parking, then we can put a little bit more out there. I'll put cones, it's a no parking.
When I do no parking, I put cones out, but there are tons.
Especially in winter.
Yeah, I'm willing to do that, yeah, I don't want to, and then, actually, I've had some conversations with some people, because it's been really frustrating, you wouldn't believe the people that park there, and one of them, a totally ambulatory person gets out of the car, and I'm like, hey, I know the person, it's okay, I left it running, as it go running into Eric's, like, that doesn't matter, it's like it's the history for somebody that can't run like that.
Okay, we got, we got Barbara, we got Troy. Barbara?
I think if it was painted blue, and I, and then people are concerned about changing the look of the top of the sidewalk curbs, plain, take it blue, like other handicap spots are in many states, and the disabled wheelchair international symbol on those spots, and where you put your ramp, because I know, because I did ADA accommodations for years and compliance, if you did the zigzag, then people wouldn't park in that spot so you could access it. And when you do have a violation, you call the sheriff, let them know that you have an ADA access violation, and I think they have to prioritize.
Well, actually, what I heard today is that there's a way you can, because, I mean, really, a sheriff, it's going to take him fifty minutes to get it. So, but what I understand is that you get, with a smartphone, you take a picture, and there's a site, they'll.
But it has to be more than just a regular yellow parking spot, I think if it is blue, which is the international symbol color, I think it would help.
Okay.
A diagonal line should be blue.
However, if that still doesn't work, we could tow them.
Yes.
You know, and the person who owns that car.
I think, I think the issue with that is, we would like them to call the sheriff, which Barbara said is prioritized by ADA access, and Renee doesn't need to be called.
Yeah.
Everything does not need to be up here.
No.
Troy?
I mean, the University of Maine in Orno, they have parking enforcement, whether it's what's there in the city of Bangor. Police don't bother with that, they just got people going up and down the street, making take the soap for people parked in a, parked in a handicap, or a no parking, or stuff like that, right, that's all they do. And I know, I tried to get down Main Street today in Bangor, I mean, you go back, there's a FedEx truck on one side, there's a truck on the other.
That's something a constable could do.
With a two hundred dollar violation of the spot, would you think?
I think it is, it's a good job.
State violation.
Hadley. Hadley.
I think for Gail's purposes, though, it's during hours of operation, you know, that, I mean, it's a, it will be a designated handicap spot, but it needs to be physically blocked, so if somebody comes and needs to use the ramp, so during hours of operation, like one-thirty to close, you would have some physical cones or.
Yes, that was my thought, if you have a no parking.
Even in the no parking, but not in the handicap spot.
In the no parking, so it's always free and clear for when that person needs.
Open up, put out your cones, that'll work.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm asking.
And public shaving works, too.
That's a good name. I know I could.
I could behave your life.
I'll make that a motion.
Who's Barbara, Kenny, Troy?
Do we do that? Oh, I can't see Barbara, oh, Barbara.
Well, I was going to say, I misunderstood when Hadley first spoke, that maybe she thought it would be a temporary disable, but I think we need all of those disabled parking places on Water Street before I had my knees done, I don't know what I would have done without them.
Oh, who was that?
Kenny.
Kenny?
I just wanted, will this anyway block, die block? No.
No.
That's the intent, I expect, ramp, we got the ramp specifically sort of blown, it actually goes up to the limit of our business. Specifically because there wasn't enough room to, for a wheelchair, to make it down the, make it down the sidewalk. So even though we're trying to accommodate, for somebody to come in, we had to keep it open, so if somebody's just walking down the street on the sidewalk, we couldn't impede their parking.
And McGinley explained to me that you guys would offer up your handicap bathroom for the public as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So that's a benefit that you don't have right down that area.
Right. I know the motion, I mean, I'll answer it.
I just have one question, not to vilify and look like some mean person, but is this any way, then, I mean, this is a request being made by a business on a public street, what if then the rock store wants to do it, and then Eric wants to do it, and then, and then parking is limited? Is there any state code?
Are they grandfathered, and you had a grant, and that's why you're different?
Yes.
Your grant, does that make you have to be ADA?
Yeah, I think they do, because they, most of the stores have steps going up, it would be very hard.
No, I'm just asking. Actually, I've talked to Eric about it, because it's a parking place that might be used for his business. He doesn't get many because his sidewalks are high, he can't get, his ramp has to be.
And he has steps.
He's got that back, that way.
Steps, yeah.
So historically, though, when we first asked about moving this last year, I think we did some research with Ricky and thought, I think there were, I can't remember the numbers, but the town plan had, I think, five spaces in the village area there, and what we did is maintain the five, we just moved it. This actually, now we have an extra space because they doubled, you know, they made it a space, but they painted it before the marathon, this. I think per the town plan and requirements for how many designated spots you have, for how many total spots you have.
We'll check that.
Yeah.
Well, so we have a motion on the floor to accept this new arrangement?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Am I opposed?
Opposed.
Not opposed, I just put a white flag.
Okay. No. We have a no. You are, did not eat enough.
You are, you're not eating enough ice cream tonight. You're not happy enough.
Stay out of the water.
Okay. Electric car charging station.
That's, I believe, gonna be tabled, but ask Gail for sure.
We're gonna table the electric cars?
Yes.
Till next time? All right, and that is actually going to be at the town meeting, so it'll be the time after. That's four weeks. Four weeks from tonight.
Troy's gonna.
I'm pretty sure before you can enforce, somebody parking in a handicap, you need a plaque and the sign. Both, so without them, you can't enforce. You can't tell anybody.
Yeah, we'll check into that, because we need to enforce it.
Do you have that vote for table?
I think so. We make a motion to table Article eleven, electric car charging station till four weeks from now.
Yes, let's, I, I, we table that until August or.
Yeah, after town meeting.
Second, the second, all in favor? That was in the.
All in favor and none opposed?
Letter of support for coastal community grants. Judy East is working with five communities, who I believe get approximately fifty thousand, of which will be split equally between the communities. And she has requested that move back be part of this. I believe she's using Safe Harbor, right?
Thankfully, she wrote this letter and had me sign it. So this is, she wrote it, I put it on town letterhead and you can authorize me to sign it, but this is what it's.
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Yeah. I just didn't wanna take credit for something I did.
We have benefited from the municipal climate adaptation guidance, but what, I just need to know what, oh, it's the Safe Harbor project. Okay, so while we are currently examining the vulnerability of our wastewater structure, it appears to be at a high enough evaluation of the water vulnerability. The Safe Harbors project in Johnsons Bay and our working waterfront in Village will definitely benefit from the high accuracy survey information that is proposed. On behalf of our municipal fishing fleet as well as others in Washington County, we fully support the effort to obtain high accurate survey information for infrastructure planning purposes. So what is this money gonna be able to spend as we get it? What is, what are we allowed to spend it on? Safe, anything to do with Safe Harbor or, you know? So why don't we let Renee, we're not gonna say no to money, right?
And I think this refers back to a conversation you had with Judy, right?
Yes.
That's so, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yes, okay. I make a, I make a motion if we let Renee sign this and let Judy go ahead with this grant.
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, other business. Sign appointment papers for town celebration committee.
Kurt Andreessen, sorry, last week down.
The president, Joey?
He had been to Eastport and the guy in charge of the pirate invasion, Don Dunbar, let him know that they were thinking about not doing the pirate invasion this year in Lebat.
Oh, how sad.
So Kurt has taken it upon himself to go to all the Water Street businesses. The reason was, I guess, because last year there weren't many businesses open. It's a hard weekend. It's the Labor Day weekend. It's the Blue Hill Fair. So Kurt went door to door and got some commitment that the businesses would be open, took it back to Don Dunbar.
They won't be open on Saturday, but yeah.
And so the invasion's back on, but I talked to Kurt and asked him if he wanted to be on this town celebration committee and he can help get the, that whole event or.
Motion?
That's his appointment paper.
Make that motion.
No, that's all for him. He's gotta do the.
All in favor?
There were a few years when Lebat responded to that. How senseless, neither.
I was a champion of supercell.
Hey, you know who we are.
Okay. Got a mailing from the county commissioners about their caucus, caucuses. They are up for reelection, some of them are. And this is just announcing when there is one of them has already passed. But for District Two, Commissioner Gardner, the caucus is at Washington County Probate Courtroom in Machias, August ninth at two forty-five PM to elect one member to a three-year term.
Is anybody running against him?
I don't think so. That's what they get.
Okay, so that's information. Public comment?
Oh, I have one more thing. This is another good piece of good news. The basketball court lighting.
Oh, no.
I went down by there today and it is there. I haven't seen it because it's photo sensor, so it doesn't come on until it's dark.
Oh, everybody rush down there.
It's there.
It's not black?
Hell will be.
Troy, after this, walk it down and play a game of one-on-one.
Well, you better, you better tell Marlene to bring the.
Committee updates, Tony. No more committee updates for you?
Uh, no, just hopefully it'll continue on the third Monday of each month.
Thank you for all your help with the Harbor Board. Joanne?
September twenty-fourth at four thirty down East EMS, Mary Bentall.
Thank you for all your work on that committee. Rachel?
Recyclable meets September the fourteenth, I believe. And we, the Economic Development Committee have just, I have been stuck. It's my fault. And I just talked to Denise and Lisa today and we have got to make an emergency meeting.
And do we need to ask our new committee members for economic development because it's.
I could use a couple more members, yeah.
The meeting, the selectmen's meeting after town meeting is when you usually make appointments, a lot of those.
So that's why you need to be looking for people from your committee.
I will recruit.
Uh, Dan?
Uh, revolving owners debate for the town meeting, which I believe we may have these scheduled. Event, at least someone has taken out some papers on it. On that election day. Did we go to the Monday?
I think we voted to have a meeting if needed.
And it sounds like we might have something coming up, so we don't have a, we don't have tentative date if there's not a patient.
Shelfish is August fifth at six o'clock and the Safe Harbor is July. That's the first one, is it, uh, sorry?
August sixth.
August sixth. At six o'clock and Safe Harbor tomorrow night at five.
I'd just like to remind everybody of the town meeting on August eighth and town election August seventh. Absentees are available now.
Public comment? It's wonderful to see everybody here. I hope you all come out on the stage and join in your community.
Seven o'clock through all that.
Yes, very much. Thank you for doing it, doing it, Tom.
You're great.
You might not go on the best ball.
I thought you were gonna wait for the lights to come on. Just gonna wait for the lights to go on.